Let's start our meeting now. Councilmember Jim Winnie, can you attest to the fact that we have a floor?
Yes, sir.
And let the record show that Dr. Sunny Proctor is absent tonight and will be with us next time, next meeting. I'd like to ask Reverend Max Kaler if he would come forward for an implication for us. Reverend Max?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Max. First, please. Heavenly Father, we bow before you tonight in this place of government, recognizing your authority, recognizing your leadership, and giving thanks for those who sit around the table to lead and guide this community. And we pray for your wisdom to be with them as they make decisions that affect all of us in Jaffna. We thank you for all of our first responders, for those men and women who give of themselves to help us in times of great stress. Thank you for who they are, and thank you for their leadership in the community of bringing new perspectives of how we do parades or how traffic's done. Thank you for their professionalism. We also want to thank you tonight for the staff of the city, for each department, for the work that they do each day to help the city move forward. We thank you for the first Mountain City and for the progress that's being made so it is continuing to inspire us and calls forward that we might be better servants of the community and be pleasing in your sight on having to go about our business. Bless our country with your providence and the men and women who safeguard us in the military. Give us grace and peace in our personal lives. We pray in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. And everybody say it.
Amen.
Councilmember John Paxton, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, if you have in front of you our agenda for the evening that has been mailed out to you and given to you, so I entertain a motion now that we adopt our agenda as presented.
Somewhat.
Second?
Second.
Jim? Motion to the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is carried. Counsel, you also have in front of you our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion this time that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Somewhat.
And?
Second.
Jim? Have a motion to the second and a discussion by counsel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the consent agenda is adopted. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to open under due business, we're going to have a public hearing. And number one in this is to a discussion to rezone parcel 030B 100.007 located at 25 H Mullins Court, consisting of 3.62 acres from C2 commercial to M1 industrial. And we're going to ask Mary Elizabeth Burgess, our planning and development director, to bring that to us.
Good evening, counsel, members of the audience. My name is Mary Elizabeth Burgess. I'm the planning and development director. Before you, you have item number one, which is the request to rezone a parcel at 25 H Mullins Court from C2 to M1. And so the existing conditions are, as Mr. Mayor said, it's 3.62 acres, it's currently zoned commercial, and it is being used as the Appalachian home furnishings. It was built in 2005, it's roughly 24,000 square feet, and its proposed use is going to be for non-alcoholic beverage distribution. So the surrounding uses, so as you can see, everything around it is C2. The existing business has been there for quite some time, and so this area has a vault where it has more of a light industry feel versus a C2 commercial. As you can tell, we have the cement contractors, and we have the flooring and plumbing and flooring and elliptical contractors over there, as well as our pharmacy for docks. So staff analysis, as with all of these applications, we want to make sure we're consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we believe that this use is consistent. We have similar light industrial uses over there as well. Will not adversely affect the economic value or unduly burden the infrastructure over there, as well as it is in scale with the surrounding uses. So staff is recommending approval with the following conditions, as you can see. Article one, so the provisions, all permitting, compliance with all of our site plan reviews, specific development documents, building regulations, and lot build-out. Also, the planning commission recommended approval with conditions.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'll take any comments from anyone in the audience that wants to speak for or against this particular issue that we have with a rezoning here. None being then, counsel, any questions or comments you have to make on this?
There are conditions on this. I always like to ask if the developer accepts those conditions and is happy with them.
Yes, developer did indicate that they would, they are able to meet our conditions of approval.
Any further discussion by counsel? Then we will move on to item number two. Discussion of special land use permit for parcel 030B 098 located on Noah Drive, consisting of 1.62 acres to allow the use of a restaurant drive-through in a C2 commercial district. And once again, Mary Burgess, our planning and development director, will bring this to you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Again, item number two, this is a request for a special use permit, which used to be referred to as a conditional use permit. With our new update to the ordinance, it is now a special use permit. This is for a drive-through in a C2 commercial district. So this is over by the Walmart master planned area. It's 1.62 acres, currently zoned C2. It is vacant, and the proposed use is for a Panda Express. So again, staff analysis, making sure that it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. It does meet the requirements, it will not unduly burden the infrastructure, and it is in scale with the surrounding uses. So staff recommendation is for approval with conditions, and the planning commission also recommended approval with conditions.
Thank you. Again, from our audience, any discussion from anyone, or questions or comments for or against this proposal? If not, then counsel, I will ask if anyone has any comments on the council or questions.
I'm sorry, I got lost. Are there any conditions on this one?
Yes, it's the same conditions that we had on the last one as well.
And the developer is?
Yes.
In agreement?
Yes, these are the standard conditions that we have.
Any further questions? We will now move to item three, discussion of parcel J810.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
You need to ask for a comment?
I did.
You did?
Yes, thank you.
You did on number two?
I did.
Okay.
It's the one looks nice there, which I can't help myself. Don't think anything of it. Okay. Item number three, discussion of parcel J810 052.002 located at 1206 West Church Street, which is a variance from zoning ordinance section 94-119 parking requirements and section 94-132 street skate. So again, we will ask Mary Burgess, our development director, to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is a request for two variances located at a parcel that is located at the intersection of West Church Street and Noah Drive. It is two acres in zone C2. They are proposing a gas station with the retail aspect as well. So the surrounding land uses across the street, you can see the Community Bank, we also have Burger King, and then the HBBW 1206 North Contractors Yard. Currently, this is what the surrounding uses look like. The assessment state page has not updated for the rezonings and the annexations that have occurred for this parcel. So it is in the city limits, and it is appropriately zoned for the use that they are proposing. So staff analysis, so this is the site plan that they are proposing. As you can see, the yellow is where they are looking for the reduction in the landscape buffer, both along West Church and Noah Drive. And they would like 40 parking spaces instead of the required 50 parking spaces. So with the staff analysis, this is a little different. It's not based on the comprehensive plan, it's based on legislative criteria. So is, are there any extraordinary or exceptional conditions pertaining to this particular property? So it is a vacant lot, so there is really nothing extraordinary about it. It can be utilized as it is currently zoned without any issue. It does have a stream that requires a 50-foot buffer as a secondary drought stream to the north of it. So is this peculiar, particular to this piece of property? No, not really. A lot of areas throughout the entire city above a stream, and they make the allowances needed in order to build on it safely. So let's see, such conditions are not the result of the actions of the property owner. Well, again, it is vacant, so there is no action per se. It has always been, it is vacant, so therefore, nothing that they did per se, made it so that they can't build on it. So that being said, it is buildable as is. And so if relief is granted, substantial detriment to the public good or impact the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. So when we talk about variances, we talk about hardships for the most part. So when you have a vacant piece of property, unless there is some sort of shape or topographic or soil issue, there really isn't a hardship. This is a flat piece of land at an intersection that I consider one of our kind of opening spots when you come into the city. So if you refer back to these two pictures, you see Community Bank has beautiful landscaping there. If we take away that landscaping on the property across the street, it'll take away from that entranceway, as well as Burger King has very nice vegetation over there as well. So when we start thinking about the expansion of 53 and cutting down more landscaping, I don't think it would be appropriate, nor do I think that it would look as attractive as, say, Community Bank and Burger King. The other issue being the parking spaces. So if they reduce the amount of retail, they reduce the amount of parking spaces required. So as this is a blank slate, basically, there is no hardship, and there is no way, reason to grant these variances as they do not meet the criteria for that. So staff recommendation is for denial of both variances, as well as the planning commission recommendation was to deny as well.
Thank you. Again, I'll ask for public comments at this time for or against this proposal. None being yet, I'll ask counsel to weigh in if they have any comments on this. None being there, Jim, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this will close our public hearing of our meeting tonight. So under due business, we have consideration and approval of ordinance number 2023-09, amending the zoning map for parcel 030B 100.007 located at 25 H Mullins Court, consisting of 3.62 acres from C2 commercial to M1 industrial. And Mary Elizabeth Burgess is going to present this to us.
As you just heard, this is going to be a non-alcoholic distribution area, light industrial use over there, from rezoning from the C2 to the M1 to make it more compatible for the uses in that area. And we are recommending approval with conditions, as well as the planning commission recommended approval with conditions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have a motion to approve this particular rezoning, article and amending?
Somewhat.
And Miss J, in a second, please.
Same.
Kurt, thank you. Have a motion and a second, and a discussion by counsel?
Can I ask a quick question about, and I think it's going to go to our attorney, Sifin, if we approve this and it goes at a change of ownership in the future, can we put the stipulation and go back to a C2 rather than just taking a chance on what it might be in the future?
You know, once you rezone a piece of property, then it's rezoned. And the only way you can change that zoning is to go through the rezoning process again under the zoning procedures act. So it's been related to me that there might be a concern under the line industrial that certain uses within that zoning classification that are permitted uses may not be appropriate for this area. So what I think we would do to address that concern, and of course, I'm open to ideas from Ms. Burgess, who's the expert in this area, but what I have seen done is that as a condition of the rezoning, you either say, you know, we're going to allow these permitted uses under this M1 zoning and list them, or you can say, we're not going to allow within this M1 zoning these specific uses. You know, I would say to you that there's got to be at least enough inherently permitted uses to have a reasonable economic use of the property. But if y'all have specific concerns, that's the way I think we ought to end with, subject to Ms. Burgess's thoughts too, on the best way to handle that.
And I've seen, I've seen also, that is one way of doing it, and I've also seen that you just put a stipulation, any future change of use, we must come back for review.
There you go.
Okay. And I'm comfortable that if it's legal, then that, I just want to make sure that we have that, especially being on the highway over there and what you've got surrounded, that we don't have something that's not usual and customary over there. So.
And I would, you know, whatever, however y'all want to handle it, I would say we would want to write that into the written ordinance so that it's clear that that's one of the zoning conditions posed. So that, you know, three years from now, change of ownership may come in, then we want to have a record that with the change of ownership, if they want a change of use, that they got to go through that rezoning.
Okay.
So we can either handwrite it into the written ordinance, you know, right now, tonight, and I can, I can fix it tomorrow and then send y'all a clean ordinance that can be signed tomorrow if y'all want to do it that way.
Are you good with that?
I am, yes.
So I guess I need to change my motion with the changes that David suggested.
And so it sounds like, and I would have to, the consensus is that the additional condition would be that any change of use of the property would have to come back before the council for a rezoning. Is that what y'all want to do?
I think you said for review, but whichever.
I mean, I wouldn't send it back for rezoning. It would be more the in-use, if it is allowed, and M1 still has to come back for approval, say for a site plan or the change of use. But if you wanted to say rezoning, then that's, essentially that's what it would be. But this would just open up the review for discussions.
So I have a motion to approve with changes as stated by our, by our development director and our attorney. Motion in a second, any further discussion by counsel?
Could you give a second of change? Okay.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carried. Thank you. Number two, consideration approval of ordinance 2023-10, amending the zoning map for parcel 030B 098 located on Noah Drive, consisting of 1.62 acres for a special land use permit to allow the use of restaurant, drive-in, drive-through in a C2 commercial district. And Ms. Burgess?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Again, as you just heard in the public hearing, this is a request for a special use permit to allow a drive-through in a C2 for a Panda Express. Again, we are recommending approval with conditions. This is a C2 use, it is allowed per the special use with the drive-through.
Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion this time that we approve this, amending the zoning map for this particular parcel.
Somewhat.
Same. I got aye, I got a jay, thank you. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And we are done. Item three, consideration approval of ordinance 2023.11, amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance section 94-119 parking requirements and section 94-132 street skate for parcel J810052.002 located at 1206 West Church Street.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is a request for two variances to reduce the number of parking spaces for the retail station being proposed at the corner of West Church Street and Noah Drive, from 50 to 40 spaces, as well as reducing the street skate strip from 15 feet to 10 feet. Recommendation, staff recommendation was for denial, as well as the planning commission also recommended denial of this request.
Counsel, at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval or denial in this process.
Move to, motion to deny, ordinance 2023-11, deny with both the points, stands, or none.
Same. Have a motion and a second. Motion by Kurt, second by John, to deny. Any further discussion by counsel? This also would meet the new utility placement plans since we're already backing up the uh.
Who's she saying?
Will you put the discussion by counsel? All in favor of the, of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
All that are opposed to denial, say aye. And the motion is denied. Item four, consideration approval of ordinance 2023.12, amend the soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control to provide for administrative fines. You got them, didn't you?
Okay.
I thought Tara gave me a break.
That's right. Get her this one.
Good evening, counsel, members of the audience, Mary Elizabeth Burgess, development director. And so before you, you have an ordinance that would allow the city to do their own fees assessment for when there are violations within our soil and erosion control ordinance. So currently, the state statute says that through the court system, we can go in and subpoena a developer and then try and charge them $2,500 per violation per day. Quite lengthy process, and so with talking with attorney Sifin, we did come up with another option that we think would be not only better for us, but easier for when we are putting these violations and they're not being addressed. I mean, some of these violations, they do stick around for a little bit, but they do not warrant a stop work order. However, a $1,000 fine would get it cleaned up a lot faster. So the max is $1,000, and it's per violation per day as similar to in the state legislation.
Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2023.12.
Somewhat. Same.
John and Kurt. Motion in a second, any discussion by counsel?
Mayor and counsel, this did go before committee, was reviewed and questioned, and it is a good step forward.
Do you have any make a head?
No, we discussed it and came up with this administrative procedure, and hopefully, as Ms. Burgess indicates, it'll be quicker, faster, more efficient for the city.
Right?
Thank you.
Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Any more suggestions? Item five, consideration approval of resolution 2023-10, well-developed, a bid acceptance. I'm going to ask our city manager, Sonya Janis, to bring this to us. Oh, city manager.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council, now that the grandstanding is done by the planning and development director. As you will recall, on Monday, February the 6th, 2023, the city council approved to allow turnip seed engineers to open a bidding process for construction of three new houses. Those, that bidding process resulted in no bidders. So the Enterprise Funds Committee commissioned enterpry, turnip seed to rebid the project. And the rebid of the project resulted in one response. And the response came in from Prime Pump &amp; Well Incorporated from Delonica, Georgia, for the amount of $193,350. That is, $119,850 of that is for the actual construction of three test wells. Each test well construction costs $39,950. The additional fees are phase two, the construction of the actual production well would be $70,200. And then phase three, if we abandoned the well, would be an additional $3,300. If the test wells do not pan out, then we wouldn't go through the phase two or phase three. So we would stop at the $119,850. So the, this development and resolution has been discussed by the Enterprise Funds Committee, and the committee recommended that this item be presented to city council for consideration. And so staff and the Enterprise Funds Committee is looking to city council to approve this well development.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution number 2023-10, well development, bid acceptance.
Somewhat.
Same. And Jim? Have a motion in a second, any discussion by counsel?
Just a second.
She's sick of it. Y'all didn't do that to her.
We'll go this way, okay? Mary, she was picking on you earlier.
We're going to get her now for you, okay?
Let me just ask, the, and I see it's in there, the fact that if we drill the first well and it is a gusher, it's wonderful, and we don't need to do the other two, we will stop at that, then. that and, uh, not move on to the second and the third.
I think phase one is a contract that we agreed to all three wells?
No, I believe it's, it's, if we hit one and it is a delight, then yes, we continue.
Yeah, it's what's in the, I'm making a point rather than questioning that.
Yes.
My only question was going to be, um, I know we had a problem, didn't get any bids, and now we got one. Do, have we vetted this company? Do we know, have we done any work with them or know anything about the?
I believe turnip seed engineers, um, they have done extensive work with this company. And so they would not have recommended them should we, uh, get them. Yes.
Okay. That, that was my only question. I just wanted to make sure.
Turnip seed was very important.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor and council, that was my actual comment in reference to their experience, ability, and, uh, financial capabilities. Turnip seed has signed off on all three areas. And so even though there was one bid only, I believe that we can be sure that turnip seeds signed off.
Yes. And we'll just hope that the first one is a gusher.
Yeah. That'd be nice, but I don't think.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is denied. Number six, consideration approval of ordinance 2023.13, amend the Georgia State Minimum Standard Code for automatic sprinkler systems. And we'll ask John Sherrill, Fire Chief, to bring this to us.
Good evening, council. I'm in our seat. All right, today I've got ordinance 2023.13 coming for you for your consideration for approval. Um, what this ordinance does is it lowers the minimum square footage for sprinkler systems. So it's automatic sprinklers for commercial properties. This will apply to new construction commercial, as well as anything that was a change of use or occupancy that's over 50% renovation as well. Uh, it lowers the square footage from what's in the state adopted code from 12,000 to 10,000 square feet down to 4,000, that or that square feet. Purpose behind this for us as a fire department is this is going to make buildings safer. Uh, as the automatic sprinkler systems have been proven to contain fires or at least slow the spread of fires until fireworks can arrive on scene and finish its damage. Um, so this represents making safer buildings for our citizens and our visitors to Jasper, as well as looking out for our property owners as well. Any questions for?
We do. Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve, uh, ordinance 2023.13. Summate.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Anne. And, uh, any questions for our fire chief?
This did go through committee and was recommended by them. And I think it'll help with everything that they're doing, as well as what we're all trying to do with upgrades.
Thank you. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Thank you.
All, sir.
Item seven, is consideration approval of task order number one, lead service line inventory with Kim Lee Horn and Boyd Leoni, our assistant city manager, and Kim going to bring this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So tonight I bring before you, uh, task order number one from Kim Lee Horn, which is one of the engineering firms that y'all approved at the May council meeting as an on-demand or our, you know, on-call engineering services provider. What all of this is regarding to is, um, in late 2021, EPA came out with a revised lead and copper rule, which indicated that municipalities, doesn't matter how large or how small you are, would be required to provide, build a lead service line inventory within your system. There have been many changes over the time, and there have been many questions about what exactly the level of information municipalities would be required to provide in this service line inventory. And we've, we've finally gotten those answers here this spring with, um, the latest guidance that has come out. And what we will be responsible for is providing information, not only on what we call the city side, that is the portion between the main and the meter, but we will also be required to provide information on the makeup of that service line downstream of the meter, which is traditionally always been considered the customer side or the private side of the connection. Um, the purpose of this inventory is to help water systems come up with a game plan for replacing lead service lines over a period of time. And so we'll talk about that in a little bit as well. Um, with preparation of these service line inventories and knowing that there is work coming, uh, the government has made funding available. This is potentially a large burden on municipalities to compile this information because it, it will take some time. We will have to come up with a game plan for how we are going to address any lead service lines that we may find within our community. And so Jifa put out a call for projects in April for grant funding and for loan funding to prepare lead service line inventories and then to take it a step further and start working on any kind of replacement work you may have. We went ahead and submitted an application for funding back in April. Kim Lee Horn, before they were actually, um, signed on with us, they had noticed that I had submitted an application with Jifa. And Matt called me and said, hey, I can help you with some of these numbers. We'll just do it because we know we haven't signed an agreement with y'all yet. And I honestly, I feel like the information that he provided is what has led to us actually being awarded funding to prepare the lead service line. We've tentatively been granted $63,525 to prepare our lead service line inventory. This is due through EPD at the state level by October the 16th of 2024. This is a huge undertaking. Um, it, it is not just a matter of, yes, we feel like this is PVC, we feel like this is poly, we feel like whatever. They want visual confirmation. They want records, maybe tap cards or any kind of service order records that would indicate what the line is. And, you know, as you know, we, we do not work on the private side of the service line. That is something that has to be done by the plumber should there be any issue. So the majority of our work is going to be centered on trying to figure out what is downstream of the meter. And EPA, EPD as well, considers if you have lead on one side, everything is lead. So. We are grateful for that grant award. There is some work that we will have to do in order to actually get the money. The task order that I have before you this evening from Kim Lee Horn is to help us navigate through the actual grant application process that Jifa is requiring you to go through. We have been tentatively approved for an award, but we need to go through the actual application now and submit that. Uh, they will help us with that. They will actually help us with data collection to figure out service records, to figure out tap cards, to figure out, uh, when a service line may have gone in, that sort of thing. They will help us with putting it into the software package that EPA requires you to use. They will help us with any kind of issues that we may be having in collecting data. So if that means mailers to go out to get information on the private side, then that is what they will do. And then they will help us actually make the submittal all before October the 16th of 2024. After that inventory gets submitted, there is going to be additional testing and work that the city will be required to do. And as we get additional pieces of information and find out additional timelines, I will be back up here before you, asking for your help. Staff requests that council approve task order one in the amount of $60,000 for lead service line inventory preparation and compliance assistance from Kim Lee Horn, who we have signed an agreement with for on-demand services.
So Kim, I remember vaguely back in 2021.
Yes.
We were in the state of COVID, I think, back then pretty much. But, but this is not just a local effort.
That is correct.
If I understand this correctly, this is a national.
That is correct.
Effort that EPA is going to require every municipality across this country. The scale of this is incredibly massive.
It is.
And now my question is, what about, uh, when we do find lead on the customer side of that line? Are we going to be required as a city to address that, uh, fix that? And, uh, and who will pay us back if so?
So the answer to your first question about who will be responsible, at this point, the answer is we will be responsible.
We won't be responsible.
We will be responsible. Yes. Uh, now, a caveat, that could change. You know, that, that part of how you're going to address your lead service line inventory is not finalized. We will have that information, they anticipate, before October the 16th of 2024, but we do not have a date for having that defined information. We feel it a victory to have what we have to have, some defined, um, parameters for what we do need to have. Uh, there is going to be money available. So we've already seen that through the bipartisan infrastructure law or the bill that has come out. And there are communities all across the country. You are exactly right. Any community water system, no matter how large, how small you are, has to provide this lead service line inventory by October the 16th of 2024. Now, there's a possibility that they will extend the date for submitting the inventory. I would not count on that, though. They have been pretty firm on that date all along. The only part that they have wavered on is what they will use in order to designate what a line is. You know, what pieces of information are going to be required in order to prove that something is not lead? So that's the only thing that, that has been the question. Um, obviously, how we address, if we find any lead in our system, will be a question that will be addressed later on with, with the additional rules. So the lead and copper rule improvement is what we are waiting for now. And that will provide us guidelines on what kind of additional sampling do we need? What kind of additional, um, testing? What, what are the actual limits or the target numbers that we're looking for? All of that is not defined right now. So.
All right.
So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So counsel, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve in consideration of, uh, this lead service line inventory of 60,000 dollars.
Motion. Go ahead.
Motion to approve is presented.
Correct, thank you.
Second.
And, thank you. Any further discussion by council?
Can you, just one clarification, because it sounds like we don't really know what we're going to have to do on the customer side right now either. I mean, I know there's still a lot of variables, but, so we're not sure after, until later, what we might have to do on that side.
That is correct. So for all intents and purposes, my belief is that we will have to address it. That is what they have ind- indicated up until this point. There is always that possibility that if it is downstream of our portion and we can prove that there is not lead upstream, then there's the possibility that it will be the customer's responsibility to take care of. However, I will say that local governments or utilities are better equipped to handle this type of process and change out. The money that would be available through the federal government, through the EPA, through any of these laws that come out with, with funding, it's going to be easier to give that to a utility or to a municipality to manage that kind of reimbursement or that work, you know, just the work, um, than it is to try and require individual homeowners or renters or anything like that to handle that type of change out.
Right. And I do agree with that. My concern would be people's property and the legality that we would have to go back to.
And that's, that is part of why this has taken so long to get to this point, is because there has always been that question. You know, downstream of the meter is not the utility's responsibility. That is private property. Um, that has always been private property. And so now that burden has been placed upon the utilities to determine and include with their lead service line inventory.
Yeah. And then stepping on private property brings a whole other big issue, Liz.
But, you know, there's communities all across the country that are dealing with the exact same issue.
They'll have to hold on. They'll have to do something blanket.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll clarify more and more, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Any further discussion by council? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And it is denied. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Item number ready. Consideration approval of resolution 2023-11, Appalachian Regional Commission Grant Porro Park. We know this is in your available, so assistant city manager, Kim?
Thank you. So tonight, um, I stand before you to talk about Porro Park, the, the green space at the corner of Spring and South Main Street. I stood before all of you at the beginning of April, and you were kind enough to pass a resolution providing council and the city's support towards providing at least a 50% match to the grant of what we were requesting of the Appalachian Regional Commission. So as a recap, we were asking for a million dollars. The city would need to provide at least $1 million, um, as our 50% matching because we are a transitional community. We submitted our grant application on April 14th, and in very early June, we were advised by the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission that ARC was looking for more information. They needed more information to make our application a little stronger so that it could proceed past the state level. So we have been working with the Regional Commission, we have been working with ARC, we have been working with the DDA and our businesses downtown to gather that economic data that shows what events downtown do for our community, how it improves the economic makeup of our community, what kind of future plans are being based off of all of this as well. Um, in the process of looking at all of that information, we took a look at the estimate again and made some adjustments to make it a little bit more realistic. Now, part of that, you'll recall, we are proposing public restrooms at Porro Park as well. And that is at the recommendation of ARC. We pulled it from later phases to phase one because restrooms are key to keeping people downtown longer. In working with our downtown restroom project, which I will be speaking with you later on this evening about, we've gotten a little more realistic cost for that project. And so we've changed that pricing in our estimate. And we also took a contingency that frankly was just too low. It was 5%, and so we've moved it up to 15% to account for rising material costs and, and things that we just don't know that might happen in the future. And so our estimated cost for phase one has gone from 2.1 million to $2,390,160. I am asking again for council's commitment to provide the minimum 50% matching funds. That means that we're going to have to provide a little bit more. And as you know, we cannot expend any dollars until grant funds are actually approved by ARC. So. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, and the motion to approve, uh, resolution 2023-11 for additional money for Porro Park.
Summate.
And?
Second.
Kirk. Thank you. Discussion by council?
Mayor and council, part of this was the funding discussion, uh, through SPO, uh, SPOST fund balance. And I believe through general revenues, uh, the discussion was had with budget and the committee with administration.
Summate.
SPOST.
Okay.
Uh, they're talking about funding for the project that we have to match. SPOST funding. SPOS funding, fund balance and general revenues was discussed with committee and administration, and SPOS should cover this.
And that was going to be my question.
Yeah.
Yes.
So do we anticipate where, when this might be started or when we might get approval or?
So based on, based on the last quarterly cycle, we'll submit before this Friday, which is the next deadline. I anticipate we should hear something late August or very early September. With the last cycle, Julianne with Northwest Regional Commission had told us, go ahead and get started with your environmental review letters, things that needed to go to the historic preservation, to the Army Corps, to DNR, a bunch of places that get to look at your plans basically and provide comment. I had started that process and I was getting ready to send those letters out and then I got the call from Julianne that we needed to provide a stronger application. So I held off. I've got all that information ready to go. From what I understand, that will save us a little time once we get the go-ahead to go ahead and send that out for review. But I anticipate it will probably be early September before we'll hear something.
Yeah, and that was, that was my question, that and funding, because I know we had the fire truck and did get things already coming out of some of them, so.
Counsel, I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And.
Thank you.
I have a number, consideration approval of ordinance 2023.14, updated and adopted new fee schedule for planning and development. Oh, there it is.
Been forever, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Planning and Development Director. Before you, you have an ordinance that would endorse an updated fee schedule. So what we've done here is we went through, we looked at our surrounding small communities and our surrounding counties to see where we added up. We were good in some areas and not so great in other areas. This will bring us into the competitive range with all of our neighbors as well as allowing for us to also have the opportunity to have a third-party engineer review our stormwater and our traffic for proposals at the cost of the developer. Also, some other items that have been overlooked such as zoning verification letters, endorsing plots and as well as business licenses and of course fiber and utility installations, which we're seeing a lot more requests for those as well. So we are also adding on a $50 administrative fee for all land used for rebuilding requests. That time that we spend on all those permits, it ends up adding up and we've been getting out a lot of free services throughout the years. And so I think it's this, this fee schedule, while modest, would actually bring us into the 21st century for fees.
So it's not going to balance the city books, but it will.
Well, I mean, that erosion incentive control on its own, like.
We'll see how that goes. If we miss compliance then. Okay. Counsel, I have a motion to approve ordinance 2023.14, the new fee schedule for planning and development. So.
Second.
And a motion in second. Any discussion by counsel?
This is best of committee, committee's completely satisfied and would like to compliment Mary, we're all.
A lot of work, thank you, Mary. Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
So you've been busy, busy.
Yes. You know she's not going away.
She still hasn't left today.
Ten. Consideration approval of GMC General Service Agreement and Task Order for Pioneer Road Storm Drains, which has been a rolling condition to play sometimes, so.
Yes, indeed. Again, Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Planning and Development Director. So this project has a lot to do with stormwater, of course, and the hydraulics of stormwater in this area. We did have a request by a homeowner to come out and take a look and the previous administration had stated that we just need a bigger pipe. Well, as you have learned by Jaws, a bigger boat is not necessarily the right tool for the issue. So when we went out to take a look at it, we did realize that there are several other issues that have been impairing the stormwater over there and is eroding out the sides and shoulders of that area over there. So we have sat down with GMC, well, we actually went out with GMC, we showed them the issues and they concurred. And so in front of you, you have a general contract which would allow for the, these engineering, surveying, design and construction phases for this project. So the total engineering is $56,505. And then we have the cost of construction inspections, which is just over $17,000, which is at an hourly rate, so it's not depending on what is needed. So basically this would, you will have somebody go out and they're going to, the surveyor will do the TOPO, they will predict for each storm flow, the 20, the 2, the 5, the 25, the 50, the 100. And then design something that will make sure that we have a security system out there of stormwater that will get down to the floodplain. This does involve five separate properties and not including the one property that the city owns over there. So we have gotten the right to enter for all of those properties except for one and we've made a concession with them, so we'll be able to move forward with this project once it is endorsed.
Counsel, I have a motion to approve the GMC General Service Agreement and Task Order for the Pioneer Road Storm Drains.
So much.
Second. And second.
Correct.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion by counsel? Questions?
Do we know where, what, this is coming out of, budget loss?
Yeah, it will, I think we can use some SPOS funding for that and yes.
2014.
2014. Okay. Thank you.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And it's adopted. I have a number 11 of 12.
Music for chairs to.
11.
11 of 12. Consideration approval of quote from Green Flush for downtown residents. We've been waiting on this a while.
Yes. So, good evening. When I say that staff is pleased to present to counsel tonight a proposal from Green Flush Restrooms for the downtown restrooms projects, no truer words have ever been said.
Hard word.
Public restrooms are greatly needed in our central business district, particularly as the city continues to work towards our goal of transforming downtown into a destination. So when we met, I think last January or February, and we had discussed the previous beautiful design for the downtown restrooms and that the cost, we needed to look at other things, how we could bring that cost down. We heard counsel's concern that a modular prefabricated building may not be fitting in our beautiful downtown area. Would we feel, though, that this Green Flush product is an excellent compromise? They have worked with us every step of the way, they have listened to our concerns, they have listened to our cost concerns, and between them and their architect, we have come up with one of their units, which is actually kind of a mash of two of their prefabricated units with a beautiful facade that works really beautifully downtown. This is a four individual stall restroom unit and we like that plan because if you have a mechanical or a plumbing issue in one unit, you still have three other restrooms that can be accessed. These are all ADA compliant, there is a skylight for additional light in the roof. They have, they're made of concrete basemary units and then there will be the additional facade that would go on the outside, the part that makes it so fitting with our downtown area. There will be a drinking fountain on the main street side that would be all stainless steel fixtures to help with that vandalism conserve, excuse me, and an easy-to-clean epoxy floor with a drain in each unit. There is a plumbing chase along the very back of the building that would be accessed from the DB Carroll side so that if anything had to be worked on, you could get to it from that door. Using the purchasing cooperative of Byboard, which is what Green Flush is a member of, the quoted price is $384,736. That's actually a little bit less than the packet that you got Friday afternoon. Kyle with Green Flush went back through and found an amount that he had quoted in error. And so this afternoon, when he sent me the update, I just quickly changed out your packages. There is an addition, though, that we recommend we go ahead with, and that is with automated locking system so that in the mornings, you set them to unlock at a certain time, eliminating the need to have the police department or public works to go by and unlock each one of the doors. And at the evening, we could set them to lock at a certain time. The doors are set to automatically close, there is that, you know, the weight on them to make them close. If somebody happened to be in one of the stalls when that magical time to lock them was, it's fine, you know, nothing's going to happen, but when they leave, the door just locks behind them, so. In order to save on shipping costs, because that facade weighs a lot and they are proposing to manufacture this in Indiana at one of their plants, and to prevent damage to the facade, Green Flush has recommended that the city have the facade placed by a local contractor here. So it would be shipped with the concrete basemary units, we'd have the roof, the skylights and everything. What it would not have are those awnings on there, they cannot ship it with the awnings on, they have to be attached after the facade is on anyways. And then the lights that are on, the exterior lights around the building too, those must be affixed once you have your facade on as well. And so we are in the process of looking for sources of brick for marble and are hoping that we can come up with a local source that might work with us to source that inexpensively. So upon counsel's approval of the quote this evening, should you decide to do that, they can start preparing the engineered plans and go through that process. And then once the engineered plans are finalized, the building will be set for construction and then it will eventually be shipped to Jasper. So at this point, if counsel were to approve it this evening, we are looking at probably 10 months, maybe a little longer, maybe a little sooner, before we would have that building in place. So we're looking at May 2024 before it would be installed and then there will be some work that we would need to do to finish the outside features on it as well. So staff is requesting counsel's approval of the quote from Green Flush Restrooms in the amount of $391,978, which includes that added-on cost for the automated door locks, which we feel is critical.
So. Second.
I didn't even have to say anything. I'm going to just hear counsel's. Motion. Black on, and second by hand.
I didn't have a chance on that one. I was embarrassed.
So any, any questions or comments from counsel?
What was the original quote that we had before we looked at this new building?
So the original estimated construction cost was $918,000 and that was for traditional brick-and-mortar construction. That was priced very early this year. I guess there's a possibility it could go down, but that's unlikely with the way things have been trending here lately. This is a guaranteed price for the building, for the shipment, once we lock in the price and sign that. Mr. Sifan has reviewed the terms and conditions, made some comments, which Green Flush incorporated into the revisions and what we have this evening.
Second.
And the other option that I think is good about this building, if it works out, if we live in the ancient Poro Park, is that it gives us another option to reduce the cost and provide that.
Sure. So I mentioned this when I was doing my Poro Park discussion as well. And this is essentially what we're looking at for that building too. They have another really nice plan that we may be able to change up, the way the building or the bathrooms configured, to get an additional fixture. You know, I don't know, it depends on what the space is that we have to work in down at Poro Park, but this will be what we recommend to be used there.
Thank you. Any further discussion by counsel?
I have a quick question. Your plan showed a water fountain.
Water fountain on the end, yes.
It's not attached to the building or?
Yes. It is. So on the main street side is where it would be, there's actually an alcove cut into the building, which just a little bit cuts into one of the stalls, but they've adjusted the spacing all the way down there and that would be where the water fountain would be.
So I guess my question was, with the issues we've had at the other parks and the vandalism, I know we're going with a different material, do you think that would be an issue with a water fountain out there or?
It's hard to say. I mean, I would hope it not. It certainly, if there's, that's about the most visible place that you could have a water fountain. There's a street light right there on the corner, it is right on the corner of DB Carroll and North Main Street. So I suppose there's always that possibility, but I think we have specked out the kinds of features and things to be used in this restroom that if it were to be vandalized, you know, it, they'd have a tough job.
With such a nice facility, we would hope that citizens would be respectful and try not to.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly hope that too.
But, you know, worst-case scenario, we could remove the water fountain features from the outside if.
If it becomes a problem.
And you think we should maybe swap over to bottle fillers versus water fountains?
We had talked about that and our only concern is with a bottle filler at the water fountain, you're then potentially detracting from some of our merchants on, on Main Street who are selling water and selling other beverages and drinks and things like that. So you can certainly.
I'm just thinking of hygiene and plus after what's happened with COVID, I think it might be a good option to look into.
Well, I mean, I fill my bottle from a water fountain. You can certainly fill a water bottle from a water fountain without having a bottle filler. The nice thing is, we could certainly change that fountain out and put in something else if it proves that that is something that the public really wants to have. But for right now, we're just.
I was going to say, that would not probably be a hard change if.
We didn't do that ourselves.
Or move there.
Well, you would have the plumbing in, you could change that out and, yes, pretty easy. My only other question was making sure that the administration had access to setting the timing for locking and unlocking, that way the, the events and that kind of stuff could be changed and.
Yes, and that's what we were thinking, you know, in the wintertime, it is certainly dark a lot earlier, so maybe we want to look at changing the times. If we know that we have a downtown event that is going until 10 o'clock or, you know, the potential to have folks still downtown after that, you know, maybe you want to adjust the time that that is actually locked.
And that was my question, making sure that y'all had access to be able to change that based on.
Yes, we will have that.
Any further questions?
Thank you for your.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that motion carried.
Woo-hoo. Thank you.
She's got to have that done too.
I have a number 12 at our last. Item number twelve at our last, I'm. Item number twelve, we have three different items that were put together on this one category. That would be the Lee Newton Park quitclaim deed, the Lee Newton Park electrical design proposal, and the termination of our I G A recreation agreement with county government. So we'll ask the city manager, Son, to bring this to us.
Thank you, mayor. Members of city council, staff's gonna let me speak again. So I just wanted to bring these three items to your attention. As you'll recall, the Lee Newton Park property was conveyed by David W. Allen to Pickens County and the city of Jasper way back in nineteen eighty-six, and the premise was it to be a joint venture. So as it evolved, Lee Newton Park was maintained and operated by the city. So the county, realizing that, you know, there were infrastructure things that we had to take care of in the, in Lee Newton Park, and we were operating and maintaining the park, they graciously deeded through a quitclaim deed that entire park to the city. And so you have been provided a copy of that quitclaim deed, and staff and the city attorney just wanted to make you aware that that had taken place. So now Lee Newton Park is fully owned by the city of Jasper. That being done, leads into the second item of G M C proposal for Lee Newton Park's master electrical design plan. So as you're aware, we contracted with Goodland Mills in Kwood for a scope of services to do a mini master plan of all of the electrical services in the park for events and things of that nature. So since we have taken possession of the park, we are bringing to city council the electrical master plan and the costs associated with that, and it would be fifteen thousand dollars for them to engineer all of those items at the park. So we realized that's within the city manager's procurement purview, but we still wanted to bring it to city council so that you know that we are starting the process of doing that at Lee Newton Park. So the third item that we're bringing to you this evening is the termination of the intergovernmental agreement, the I G A, for recreation services with Pickens County. So the city's been notified by the county that in consideration of the investment that they have made at Roper Park Recreation Center ballfields, that they will no longer need to use the city of Jasper Park ballfields. And so they have notified us that they would like to terminate the I G A that they have had with the city of Jasper. This one, we would like for you to vote to approve this termination based on the documents that Mr. Sifan prepared and that you have before you. Mr. Sifan prepared the documents that would have the termination agreement become effective August the first, twenty-twenty-three, and then the city ballfields would be transferred back into the purview of the city.
Thank you. Counsel, ten motion to approve items A, B, and C.
Motion to approve is approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by counsel?
Then tell us more about the termination paperwork.
Now, y'all have a formal intergovernmental agreement with the county that allows the county to use the ballfields at City Park, and it automatically reused. So when they gave us notice that they no longer needed to use the city's ballfields, it was in the middle of the annual term, one of the renewal terms. So, you know, from my viewpoint, since we've got a written agreement, I just wanted something in writing to document that we're ending that written agreement and setting a specific date for the I G A to end. You know, under that I G A, if the county did improvements to the city's fields, which under that agreement, the county could do, in theory, you know, material suppliers have ninety days in which to file a lien or claim. So part of what the termination agreement does is have the county verify that there's no outstanding supplier bills or invoices or anything to do with those ballfields. And plus, it gives us a document that will physically end the I G A, and then, you know, we can take over our ballfields again and do what we want to do with our own ballfields. So that was the thinking behind the termination.
Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye. Close, same. And those three motions are carried. Reports, public safety judicial, Kurt Raffield and Anthony.
Mayor and council, in our last committee meeting, we discussed the ladder truck, which should be arriving, I would say, within the next thirty days before we meet again. Also, the fire chief and police chiefs of vehicles, those have been ordered, they are on their way. Thank you for the sprinkled ordinance. That is a step in the right direction for protection and for I S O rating. National Night Out is coming. I'm proud that our police department is sponsoring this event with some partners. That is July twenty-ninth, six P M to nine P M. So we will have more information released about that. We're also working with the Sheriff's Foundation and the Sheriff's Office, in reference to Jeep Fest coming up. Committee and the administration also made an investment in the repeater system for the public safety departments in our city, so thank you very much.
Dan.
Something about.
Parks and Robries. Mr. Parks, is that John? You had.
Unfortunately, I was at work at the last committee meeting, so I'll ask Kim if you would mind giving a side of it.
Sure. So we've talked about a couple of really important park projects this evening already. I do want to bring the council up to date on something that we are also doing at Lee Newton Park, and that is constructing a new asphalt ramp from the walking trail up to the public restrooms in there. There has been an outcry. Currently, it is just a, it's just ground, basically, with tree roots, and it is not easy to get from the walking trail back to the building if you have any kind of accessibility issues or in a wheelchair or anything like that. So we went out to bid, and the contractor that would be doing that path for us is in the process of paving Roper Park right now, their walking paths, and as soon as he is finished, he is going to come over and do that for us to get that finished. The other big project is Doris Wiggington Park and the mountain bike trails, and I actually got a piece of information just before I came in here today. Progressive by Cramps is nearly ready to install our pump track, so I was a little surprised that they built it a little faster than I anticipated. Sometime in August, they will be here to construct that pump track, so.
Good.
We'll all go out and ride bicycles after a council meeting. So, yes.
Thank you.
Enterprise funds, Mr. Lenny.
The enterprise, excuse me, on the twenty-eighth of June, we did discuss and recommend the well project options that was voted on earlier, and I appreciate council approving that. We'll be moving on it quickly. Also talked about wastewater expansion. I think it kind of came from the engineers, turnip seed engineers, that the contractor, Reeves Young, is progressing on that project. This is a long one, it's been a half number night, and we will be talking about this one for a while. I think the rest of it is pretty much boilerplate. We've had a good meeting, and again, I appreciate full council approving the well project. That's really important to the city down in Rhode.
Thank you, sir. Development and local infrastructure, Kurt Raffield and John Pass.
Mayor and council, we did meet previously. We had a discussion of all current ongoing projects, any deficiencies that we were addressing. First off, thank you for the fee schedule, that will also go with addressing those deficiencies, and then thank you for the vote on Pioneer Road with the drainage issue.
I guess after Mr. Dutt's meeting, you can see that we've been pretty busy. We'll have to thank staff for all their hard work. This stuff just doesn't happen. It takes a lot of hard work, a lot of study, a lot of research, and lots of wet materials in the field. We will appreciate the city workers and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the administration. And Jim.
The committee has reviewed the proposed budget calendar, and it's included in the consent agenda, but also that will, could possibly change depending on when we get the tax judges to finalize, but it gives everybody an idea of what we're going to do with that. We also have in there the updated pay scale, and it's in there for the, for everybody's review as well. That, I kind of want to reiterate what John just did with the staff, because it does take a lot of time and effort to put these things together. We get to review them, we critique them, and do all that, and we know y'all put a lot of work into a lot of these projects, or all the projects, and it's not something that happens overnight. So I would want to reiterate that, too. What a good job, and we appreciate what y'all do. We also are at a point with A M I implementation that we have five thousand nine hundred and seven meters completed. Yay. Yay. Yeah, we got about forty to fifty more still to do, but solid as shit. Thank y'all.
Information, Ted Donaldson, Kirk and Jim.
Our committee is scheduled for a meeting next Thursday, I believe, here with the administration as we continue to look at options for our organization. I believe we are well on our way to coming up with a recommendation for full council.
Is there data, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for meeting with us. That's going to end our regular meeting at this time. We're going to go into executive session for purposes of discussing legal and real estate. So thank you for coming.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.